I call this meeting to order. Let us stand. For the flag salute and a moment of silence thereafter, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Sotile.
Present.
Commissioner Maros looks to be absent. Commissioner Circo.
Present.
Commissioner Pollock-Rude.
Present.
And Commissioner Vias. Present, okay. For present, Maros is absent.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome to the El Cajon Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of El Cajon website. Appeals of final decisions of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk before 5:00 PM Friday, June 17th, at 2022. It must include the payment of a filing fee. If you wish to speak on either an non-agenda or an agenda item tonight, please fill out a request to speak card located by the agenda and turn it in to the secretary who will call you up to speak when the agenda item comes up for public comment. We ask that you give us your name, spelling your last name. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The display on the podium, as well as the other monitors in the chambers, will show time counting down. At 30 seconds, the podium clock readout will turn red, signifying you have 30 seconds until the end of your time. Applicants and individuals representing groups of people may be allowed more time if appropriate. All public hearing comments should be addressed to me as the chair of the commission and not to individual commissioners or staff members. Please turn off all electronic devices if you have not already done so. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 11479, a commission who has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission other than an unescorted view of the subject property is required to disclose such information at the hearing. At this time, we will take comments from any member of the public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not in the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on items brought forward until public comment except to refer it to staff for administration or place it on a future agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission on a public comment? Please come forward. Come forward.
Speak a little louder.
Sure.
Is that the secretary?
Yes.
You're the secretary.
Oh, you don't have a comment? You just want to fill out a speaker card?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? We come to the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all items on the consent calendar. Does a commission wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No.
Does a staff wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I move to adopt the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion made by Commissioner Circo, seconded by Commissioner Vias, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of all members present.
The second item, this is a continuance from the May 17th meeting. We opened up public comment and we didn't close public comment, it's still continuing from that meeting. We didn't have a quorum at that time for a vote and we now do have a quorum except Paul here, Commissioner Circo.
I must recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Staff, do you want to give a general overview of what happened at last meeting?
Yes, of course, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay.
So again, this is a proposed fireworks display on July 2nd and 3rd of 2022. It's proposed at the Shadow Mountain Community Church at 2100 Greenfield Drive. So as stated earlier, this item was heard by the Planning Commission on May 17th of 2022, but the item was continued due to a lack of a quorum. So the project does propose a fireworks display on each night, that's June 2nd, or excuse me, July 2nd and July 3rd, with the fireworks commencing between 8:30 and 9:00 PM and lasting for up to 15 minutes. On-site viewing for the fireworks display will be on the north side of the Shadow Mountain campus, north of the Worship Center, where an outdoor worship service will occur prior to the fireworks display. The fireworks will be launched from the baseball field on the southeast portion of the site. So here you can see the existing site, so Greenfield Drive is on the left side of the slide, and then the baseball field is circled in green. So the green circle is where the fireworks would be launched from, and then the Worship Center further to the north is where the viewing area would be. So the zoning code does allow fireworks display with an approved conditional use permit. This slide shows proposed conditions of approval to ensure compatibility with surrounding properties and uses. So the conditions of approval propose temporary signage to alert the neighborhood 10 days prior to the event. And then for shell diameters, it's proposed to be limited to three inches. So this is the same requirement that's used for Granite Hills High School for homecoming. And additionally, for reference, this is smaller than what the city does. So on the city, on the 4th of July fireworks at Kennedy Park, those typically go up to four-inch diameter shells. So it's a smaller display than what happens typically on the 4th of July. And then for safety purposes, an operational permit from Heartland Fire and Rescue will be required for the event. Rachel Clark from Heartland Fire and Rescue is present tonight and can come down to answer any questions if there's any safety or fire-related questions. So in order to approve the requested conditional use permit, the Planning Commission does need to make the required findings that are shown on this slide. So staff's analysis does show that the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and zoning if a conditional use permit is approved, that the proposed use would comply with required development standards, and that compatibility can be achieved through proper notice to the public and because of the short duration of the event. And the operational permit from Heartland Fire and Rescue will ensure that the event is conducted in a safe manner. And then lastly, that the public convenience and necessity is served through the conduct of the event, of an event that supports community pride. So prior to the May 17th hearing, two public inquiries were received by staff in response to the public hearing notice. The first caller asked for additional information and expressed no objections. The second inquiry was via email and objected to the events based on fire safety concerns. Since May 17th, staff did receive six additional emails, and those have been printed and presented to you on the dais. In summary, three of those were clearly in opposition to the proposed fireworks, two were in support, and one was seeking additional information before declaring support or opposition. So the project does qualify for a California Environmental Quality Act exemption under Class 4, which does allow for temporary events with negligible environmental effects. And so staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the next resolutions in order, approving the CEQA exemption and then approving conditional use permit 2022-0004, subject to conditions.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Pollock-Rude, have you had an opportunity to look at or read what happened at last meeting?
Yes, I did go over what the last meeting.
You did go over?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Wanted to make sure that you did, okay. Well, do you have any questions, staff, before we open that up? No? Okay. All right. We're going to continue the public comment from the last meeting from May 17th, and let's see if we have any speaker cards. Laura?
Yes, I do. The first one I have is Tina Shaw.
I believe you were here last time.
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Tina Shaw, S-H-A-W.
Did you need anything else from me before that?
No.
Okay. So once again, thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns regarding the proposed use of fireworks on July 2nd and 3rd. As I shared in the previous planning meeting, fireworks cause a great amount of stress on our animals. The shelters are always filled with dogs after the July 4th event. Some dogs are never found and returned to owners. Besides dogs, in our neighborhood, we have livestock that's negatively affected. Injuries are not uncommon among our livestock. Besides dogs, we have donkeys, pigs, llamas, horses, and other livestock in our area, and moving our animals is not always possible. I have horses, one of which is geriatric and panics over fireworks. I worry that three consecutive days of fireworks will be the literal death of him. I also have a yearling, a one-year-old colt, who may panic as well. We don't know how he's going to handle it. There are others in our neighborhood, as I've said earlier, who have livestock that aren't regularly handled and can't be transported easily. Some families don't have the equipment, financial means, or an alternative location to move the animals. While the fireworks provide less than 30 minutes of fun, those of us with animals have hours, days, and months of work to deal with after effects. Based on a question from the previous meeting, which asked for the type of injuries that can occur, I explained some animals can run themselves to death, others can be startled and run through fences and get caught up and have horrible injuries. I have with me an example from a foal that was startled and tore his side open. So I brought you some pictures so you can see what that is. This wound took five months of doctoring to heal, doctoring twice a day and over $1,000 in supplies. So for 30 minutes of fun, watching the fireworks, we had five months of doctoring. Fortunately, this baby's going to be okay. Besides the trauma to our animals, there has been a recent increase in illegal fireworks and gunshots. We have hours and hours of disruption. Many of us are afraid to go outside for fear of the stray bullets being shot into the air. We do not have an increase in patrol to stop these activities, so we live temporarily in a mini war zone during fireworks. While we accept the fact that there will be chaos and danger with the fireworks on July 4th, it is unfair to ask our community to deal with the chaos and danger of fireworks for three days in a row. It is my hope you now recognize the tremendous cost fireworks have in our area. I hope the church realizes that their 30 minutes of entertainment is devastating to many of us in the community. While they get to party, we stay home and pray our animals will be okay. And I'll pass these to you.
All right, thank you.
They're the same.
All right. I do have a question for you.
Sure.
How far do you live from Shadow Mountain?
I live a half mile.
Okay.
I live right behind the football field. So 4th of July, they're shot right up over my house.
What have you done in the past to mitigate the issues that you just mentioned this evening?
There are some horses that I've had to haul out. There's many years that I've spent driving around with a truck and trailer up on the freeway, waiting until it is. The hard part is getting back into my neighborhood. Because we can't get back into our own neighborhood, it's shut down around that time, especially for the 4th of July. Other times, I'm out there holding horses, you know, getting run over by them when, you know, the booms go off, you know? And a lot of times, every year, 4th of July, I'm sitting out there in the pasture. I remove my dogs, I have them haul up to Boulevard because I can't manage both the outdoor animals and the indoor animals. So it's a lot of shuffling, so.
All right. Any other questions that you have for Tina Shaw, Ms. Shaw? Fellow commissioners?
Turn on my microphone. So thank you for coming in and speaking today. I don't know if it's an alternative of them, if it's either both nights or no nights, if there was, if they were to compromise and have one additional night. I would ask you, what would be the better option? Would it be to have it and then have a night off? And then the, I mean, the 4th of July, we know is going to happen no matter what? Or is it better to have them be, like, if they did the sun, because the 4th of July's on a Monday? So if they did the Sunday night and then you still had it Monday night, is it better to have them together? If that's even an option?
It's, it's really tough to say because, especially like for the older horse, he's so crippled up after the night that he can't really move for a week. And then having another set of fireworks and running him can just be devastating injuries. So for an older horse like that. For other animals that haven't been handled and stuff, it's very hard. It's very traumatic for the animals to experience it. So, you know, obviously, preferably would have no fireworks in our neighborhood, but we know that's not possible and it's not fair to everybody in the neighborhood. So we've gotten used to the July 4th. But tagging on two other fireworks right at the same time, when as Mr. Alvy stated that the 4th of July uses larger fireworks beyond the typical conditional use fireworks, it, you know, I don't know which would be better. Just having more than one day in a row, or even within a couple days of each other, is very, very hard on our animals, very, very hard. So it's a tou, I can't really answer that. I don't think there is a good option. So, sorry.
It's okay. Commissioner Pollock-Rude, you have any questions of Tina Shaw?
She was very informative, you know, I get it. I have a Malinois, so I get it.
Thank you.
I do have another compromise possibility.
Okay.
What about if Shadow Mountain would reimburse you to relocate the animals until the events have been completed?
I don't know if that would be financially possible. I mean, I personally have truck and trailer, I'd have to, you know, have friends come, especially for the colt that's not been hauled in a trailer. Getting him in a trailer will be a challenge. Knowing whether the older horse can step up and get in, you know, so I have the ability with a truck and trailer to possibly move. But right by Shadow Mountain, there's llamas and things like that. I don't know whether all of my neighbors have trucks and trailers that can do it. So, I mean, the financial impact, and then where do they go for the night, that would be quite a bit for, you know, Shadow Mountain to have to pay. And for the dogs that have the anxiety, are you going to pay for a hotel for these people? So I think you'd have to ask other people who have, don't have the means to move their horses, like I have the means in my truck and trailer. I think they would have to answer that question, whether it would be okay. The hard part for me is if I move them out, I still need to be at my house, as, you know, and especially on the 4th of July. We've had people that picnic in our yard, we've had people that steal things out of our yards and everything, because I'm right, our, our property is the third driveway up from the football field. So we have to be there to monitor our yard. So if I'm hauling things out, where do I move them? Where am I? I can't be in two places at once. It's, it's always a juggling act.
However, would you be open to the idea?
Of financial compensation?
Financial help, compensation?
Um, for me, no.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, no other questions.
Thank you.
Sure. Laura?
Okay, we have a card from Mike Scott.
My name is Mike Scott. First time here, but I kind of agree with her because she covered a lot of what I was going to talk about, too.
Could you spell Scott for us? I know it's easy to spell, but just for the, for the record, could you spell your last name, please?
S-C-O-T-T.
Thank you.
I think my first question would be, why Shadow Mountain feels it's necessary to put on a fireworks show two days in a row? It, it just seems odd, you know, it hasn't happened before with Shadow Mountain, and except for indoor displays. And they're, it doesn't seem to impact the neighborhood as much as an outdoor display like this would be. And like Ms. Shaw said over here, three days in a row of three or four-inch shells, mortars going off until nine o'clock at night, and it's, it's, I don't, I don't see the reason why Shadow Mountain feels they would have to do this for a celebration. And I do understand that they have services on the weekend, and this year, July 4th is on a Monday, so it makes sense for them to have a celebration on the weekend. But can't they do that without a fireworks display? Or something like they've done in the past where it's indoors? So I, and I have animals also, and I have one dog that just, she, she can't handle it. So I would have to take my dogs off property, too. I live, I live a little bit further away, three-quarters or maybe a mile away, but every 4th of July, when they shoot the fireworks off at the school there, there's dogs, people that own dogs all around me, and half of the dogs, they take off, sometimes they're not found again. And it's just, it seems to me it's unnecessary just because Shadow Mountain wants to do a big display like this. I don't, I don't see the reason for it. And it doesn't just impact the animals, it impacts some of us who suffer from PTSD or other ailments, and they have no place to go when this happens. 4th of July, we anticipate this coming, and we try to make arrangements to get out of town or go somewhere else where you don't hear the booms anymore. It's, you know, enough said, she said most of what I was going to say, anyway. My other question has to do with, I'm not too familiar how the CUP, how the fees are arranged for an event like this. Can somebody kind of clue me in on that?
We'll ask staff, if you have any other questions, we can ask staff right now. Do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
I'm against it.
Okay.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, could you answer that question regarding the fees?
The City Council has an adopted fee schedule, and our fees are based on the time that it takes for staff to process individual applications. So for the conditional use permit, it's the time associated with preparing the staff report that was presented to the Planning Commission, sending out the public hearing notices, and then responding to comments and moving forward. So the fees are based on the amount of work that staff does.
Right. And Mr. Scott, you do realize that the fireworks are going to be for about 15 minutes long at the most each day?
They're just 15 minutes long?
Yeah, 15 minutes long.
That I could probably handle because they're about a half an hour long on July 4th, and that's, that's barely doable for us.
Yeah, they're about 15 minutes long. And also, would you be open to the compromises that you have heard here this evening? The suggested compromises?
A compromise for what?
Regarding maybe having one day instead of two days in a row, or having Shadow Mountain, if they would want to, reimburse you for any expenses that you incur by placing the animals elsewhere?
Well, that won't help me any with PTSD, you know, it might, I'm against that, you know?
Okay, all right. Very good. And any questions, fellow commissioners? No?
So on my little card there, I was put undecided, but I'm siding with Ms. Shaw over here, so you can put that down, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Laura, any other speaker cards?
Yes, I have one more. Anita Stewartson.
Please spell your last name.
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Anita Stewartson, S-T-E-W-A-R-D-S-O-N. I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I wanted to, first of all, say thank you, Tina, that was incredible. You said everything that everybody wants to say, and as well as you did. One of the things that was not mentioned, however, is when you say fireworks last 15 minutes, they don't. Our neighborhood goes bananas at the 4th of July, any event, it doesn't even have to be a holiday. Fireworks go off, big fireworks go off, and it messes up our dogs, our animals, for hours. They will not calm down. We've tried thunder blankets, but when it's like 105 outside, it's just almost impossible. We're trying medications, it's time to sedate, and it just almost confuses our animals more. It's heartbreaking. I haven't gone to a fireworks display and sat out and enjoyed it for years. I would say almost 20 years, I have not gone out. We shut up our house, we make our house dark, we lay in our bedroom, trying to keep our dog calm, and she is not soothed. And so I just feel like, I don't know, I don't know if you don't get it, but it's not just the planned fireworks. If that was all, that would be great, you know? But I know that Shadow Mountain has done them indoors. There's also silent options of fireworks that are available, and there's other modes of celebrating. It's the illegal fireworks that add on to this. So instead of just 15 minutes or 30 minutes, we have hours all over El Cajon, they just go off. So that's my concern, I'm against it. I am on the side of these, my friends, and I'm sorry to say that I don't think it's necessary.
How far do you live from Shadow Mountain?
I live by Kennedy Park. I'm the administrator for the Granite Hills Neighborhood Watch, and so I see all the feedback, all the lost dogs. And so I spend a lot of my time also on these holidays, helping people find their dogs, posting pictures of their lost dogs.
Fellow commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Stewartson?
I just have one. If Shadow Mountain chose to not do this, do you think there would be no illegal fireworks going on?
No, the illegal fireworks are way out of hand, and that should have been nipped in the bud 20 years ago. But that's another issue altogether.
Right.
I'm just saying you're adding to it. You're adding to it.
Yeah, and I certainly understand, I live in El Cajon on a very busy main street here, and, and I'm, just the other night, I'm like, was that a gunshot? Was it, is it somebody with fireworks? I mean, and there's nothing, nothing going on. I want to make sure, though, and I certainly, you know, just, I'm, I'm just speaking on that issue, not the animal issue or the PTSD issue, but I just want to make sure that we don't penalize someone who's trying to do the process the correct way, because there are people that will do things the wrong way, right?
I understand what you're saying.
So, I mean, I get, I'm, this is separate from the animal and the PTSD issue, because there could certainly be, because it's 4th of July weekend, we know there's going to be people out there that have gone to El Centro or Yuma or wherever you can, I don't know if you can buy fireworks in California anywhere, but cross the border, right, or make them themselves. And so that's going to happen. And those could be louder because they might be closer to your home than even the Shadow Mountain one, and the Shadow Mountain one will be smaller. Just trying to look at all the options and making sure we're not penalizing one group, because I understand that they're probably just trying to do some community outreach to people that might not come to church, but might come to church because they're having a celebration, and it might open up a different avenue for their life. So, there's a lot to think about.
You mentioned, you mentioned earlier spending money on sending our animals and us or whatever to other locations. Is it possible that they could invest a little bit more and maybe have silent fireworks? Have some music and some silent fireworks? It's those booms. It's the really loud booms that are getting the dogs and the animals all upset.
Any other questions? Yes?
Well, a question slash a comment, just because I, I used to live by SeaWorld, and every night at 10:30 for years.
I can't hear you.
Is your mic on?
It's on, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I used to live by SeaWorld, and for years, every night at 10:30, I knew there was going to be fireworks. I had animals, and I have a husband with PTSD. So I understand your concern about the animals, and I have animals now that every night in El Cajon, we hear gunshots and everything else that disturbs animals. So I understand your concern, and this is something you can try to stop because we know what's happening, where everything else we can't stop. know what's happening, where everything else, we can't stop because we don't know when it's happening. But, you know, you may be an improviser, some sort of compromise, having it one day, or maybe having one day of silent and one day of regular fireworks that aren't quite as loud, to try to have some happy medium, to try to have a, I mean, nothing's ever going to be a happy medium, but try to, you know, so you can at least plan accordingly. Because as you said, we can't stop the fireworks from happening. We can maybe stop this, but everything else unfortunately is, is going to happen, so.
Well, if I was going to have to pick a night, if Shadow Mountain could do it on the Fourth, that'd be great, because it's at the same time as the other ones are going off.
Gotcha.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
There are no more speaker cards.
No speaker cards, okay. Mr. Snow, are you here representing Shadow Mountain? Could you please come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you spell Snow?
Yep, so I'm, and it's Brian Snow, S N O W. I'm the executive pastor and chief operations officer of Shadow Mountain Community Church.
Well, you've heard the concerns this evening.
Absolutely.
And I, I know I, these suggestions that we, we've made regarding compromises.
Sure.
Would you be open to compromises or not?
First, let me, let me just say, I don't, you know, I don't envy y'all's position at all, because I think that this is a situation where you have a whole room full of well-meaning people that just disagree on this issue. I, I think that we would all consider each other to be friends and neighbors. And, and sometimes we have to, you know, we have to disagree. So I, I certainly don't envy your position. As far as the, the compromise suggestions, I've never, I, we had our, our fireworks expert here last time. They've never offered us a silent fireworks option, I've never heard of that either. So I, I can't speak to that. As far as doing it on the Fourth, as was mentioned before, we have church services on Saturday and Sunday. We've done this, we, we, we celebrate America every Fourth of July week, the weekend prior to Fourth of July, and we invite people from all over the community. We've done that for many years. When COVID started, we moved that service outside, and it was a big hit, people loved it, tons of children come, it's, it's, it's really a festive environment. And we felt like this is something that we could do that would be, you know, really special. So we still, in spite of the concerns, we're, we would ask that you vote to approve it. But we certainly understand if you, if you deny it based on the concerns. So we're, we're, we're trying to do something that would have a positive impact on the community, and, but we do understand what the concerns are as well.
Well, Commissioner Vias made a suggestion, do you want to repeat the suggestion that you made to?
Yes, I, I was wondering if it's an option, instead of doing the fireworks the both nights, maybe having, having that for one of the services instead, maybe the Saturday night service as opposed to, I mean, most people be off Monday, and there's no school, so that's still kind of a day off. But I felt that might at least give anyone who had animals or had their own PTSD, kind of at least one opportu, you know, one night to kind of recover.
Yeah, we would prefer not to do that. Our, you know, we do two identical services, one Saturday, one Sunday. And it's just basically, it offsets the crowds, you know, people can come one or the other, and it makes it, again, less of an impact for the neighborhood. I think if we put it all in one service, first of all, we don't have enough room to accommodate everyone all at once, we have to spread it out on two days. So if you had one service that had fireworks, one that didn't, that, I think that that would be certainly less optimal, it'd be not, not as good, so.
And insofar as having the two nights that you requested.
Yes, sir.
Would you be willing to reimburse the neighbors if they had to move their animals to a different location?
I haven't heard anyone yet that's, that, that has, that has asked for that. Certainly, you know, if there's a specific request or something, I could look into it. But the.
I don't mean to spend your money.
Well, no, it's okay, I mean, obviously, you know, we, we don't want anything bad to happen either, so. But I think that that would be, that would be pretty hard to, to administrate and to manage, figuring out who, who had expenses related to that and who didn't. You know, that could be pretty, pretty tough to navigate. But if there was a specific circumstance, certainly we could talk to somebody.
Right, I agree, okay. Fellow commissioners, do you have any other questions for Pastor Snow?
It's Brian, Brian's fine.
I do just have one other question. Have you guys done outside fireworks before?
No, ma'am, they've always been indoor. And last year, when we switched to outside, we did the service during the day. And so now we're moving it to nighttime and doing the fireworks, it's the first time we've done it. Yep. And one other note, you know, there's a lot of reference to the Fourth of July fireworks, but there are fireworks that happen, that are, again, legal fireworks that happen throughout the year as well. I think Granite Hills Homecoming is one of those that was mentioned. It, it does happen periodically. Also, Saquon does fireworks very frequently. And I'm, I know that that is mitigated somehow.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Quick question, the fireworks that you have, are they similar to the Granite Hills?
They're similar to the Granite Hills Homecoming fireworks, not, not the Fourth of July, so they're smaller than the Fourth of July, and it's a shorter duration. So we're, we're doing it for, it's really, it's not to exceed 15 minutes, it'll be less than that, it's closer to 10.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward, and you can fill out the speaker card after you're done. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can I interject one additional item? As part of the staff report and the analysis on noise, staff referenced the issue of a specific type of fireworks that are called reporters. So the reporters are typically the loud bang fireworks. And for Granite Hills High School, they actually have a specific prohibition on the use of the reporter fireworks. So the most common explanation that I can think of for that is during the Star Spangled Banner, you'll have, the bombs bursting in air, and then they'll have the pops. And so at Granite Hills High School, they're prohibited as part of their approval from doing that. In the staff report, staff referenced that prohibition, but it's not included in the conditions of approval. So if there's a specific concern about that type of firework, the commission could introduce that as a condition of approval related to, to this project.
Okay, thank you, Noah. All right, since there are no other speakers, I move to close a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Sotile, second by Commissioner Vias, please vote.
Can I have you vote again? I don't think I got it.
Again, okay, let's do it again. Okay, I'm through.
Motion carried by unanimous vote of members present.
So I think the Noah Alvey suggestion is a very good suggestion, if you want to approve. But you've heard the concerns this evening, what's, what's your thoughts?
Well, I mean, it's certainly not a clear-cut thing, you know, one way or the other. You know, it's nice to have, we've had so much darkness the last two years, it's nice to let people be outside and, and have a celebration and support, you know, the, a church in our community with having that celebration. And what it might do, how that might impact someone coming for that celebration. But also, you know, I have animals and work with rescues and understand how the Fourth of July and some other things, you know, do impact. Even with our animals, our animals aren't as impacted as much, but I have had animals and pets that, you know, we've had to get out the, you know, stuff to, so that they wouldn't try to run out or get the call from the animal shelter, that my dog's there again. So it's, you know, it's not clear-cut, it would be, I mean, I do, I do appreciate the fact that this is a smaller set and quieter noise. And maybe not having, you know, I, I didn't really think about it until, you know, Mr. Alvey brought that up, about there are certain fireworks that certainly even when you're watching them can make you jump, and you know that it's going up because they're so loud. And not having those, because some of the others are just more that kind of pop and the crackle kind of sound. And I don't know that that sound travels as far either, and might be less impactful. I wish I could say this is like, oh yes, this is clear-cut, you know, yes here, no here, you know? So I'm going to still think about it for a couple more minutes.
Okay. Commissioner Public Root, do you have comments?
The only comment I have is, you know, what he said regarding the fireworks of having some that maybe don't have the same effect as others, because I know Fourth of July will have a lot of bangs and booms and what have you, and if we could have, limit that sound for the neighboring animals. Nothing is going to be perfect, but trying to, it's like a catch-22. And, you know, I, the kids don't care if it's loud and annoying, they just like the sparkle, so maybe if we could do something that's not quite as loud and, you know, impactful on the animals, because the booms do startle them. I know the sparkles aren't that great either, but it's, it's a happy medium, unfortunately.
I will say that the suggestion about silent fireworks, I don't think I've ever heard of that specifically. I do know during certain displays, you'll notice some go up and you don't really hear much of a sound. I mean, there's certainly ones that have, like the sky is ripping, or just a little sprinkle, or the, the big boom. So, I mean, it's a shame that that hadn't been presented last time, where there would have been an opportunity to do a little research and investigation.
Do you know what a silent firework is? I've never heard of it before. Does staff know that?
I'm not familiar with that terminology, but I'm sure that, you know, the commission could also encourage, you know, the applicant to work to minimize sound and to use fireworks that are less impactful as well. So if the commission is looking at the specific aspects of the fireworks display, you know, limiting the sound, limiting the reporters, and then encouraging the applicant to minimize sound to the maximum extent feasible.
If I could say, I mean, I feel as far as the safety part of it, I don't think there's a question, I feel, I feel like very, that that's, all that's being handled, everything's being handled very safely. I don't think there's any increased fire risk. Or, I mean, it's, it's really the pyrotechnics people that take the, the risk on themselves are the ones closest to everything. So I think, I think it really does just come down, at least for me, on the, the noise aspect and maybe how that might be impactful. I don't think, I know there's been some talk about the traffic in some of the messages, but I, I think that this is such a short duration of a firework display, I can't imagine a lot of people wanting to drive over to see it. I think most people are going to be doing their own things on the weekends and waiting for the Fourth of July parade, or not parade, but, you know, celebration. So I, I think it's really, it really does come down to the noise issue, and what, what can we do or suggest or compromise to help with the noise part of it.
Yeah. So what do you think about one day the full fireworks, and then the second day the quiet ones, or the silent fireworks?
I mean, I think that if we were looking at that, is that maybe, maybe they could do more of a, almost maybe more of a little bit of a blend of the two? I don't know, I'm not a fireworks person, so I don't know if, if like, if you had a firework that makes sound, and then if you have one that doesn't, if, is it visually the same? Or is there a different visual that comes with it? So now they have to, you know, the, the, the pyrotechnic person has to come up with two different sets? Is it possible to ask the applicant one more time, is this something that's set to music?
We have to reopen the public hearing?
I'm sorry, I just thought of that. No?
Yes, we can reopen the public hearing and ask the applicant to address those questions. And then I would just add, as it relates to silent fireworks, just a quick search for information, it's, it indicates that they're not completely silent, that they're just typically quieter than, than normal fireworks. So it may be something that the applicant could consider in working with their pyrotechnic experts to look into the specific types that they want to utilize, but a question better served for the applicant.
Let's open the public hearing again. Mr. Snow, Brian?
I can tell you that we don't have any concussion shells planned, it is set to music. And because this got delayed last time, we don't have a lot of time to figure out a different, whole different show, we've already hired a vendor, we've, you know, obviously we understand that if it gets denied, it gets denied, but we, I don't think that there's a realistic, I would, I would be being disingenuous to suggest that we could realistically pursue a silent option that, that has up to this point been unknown to us, I think. But there, but I can tell you that there are no percussion shells in the show, and that it is set to music.
Okay.
But, but the timeframe just doesn't allow for, you know, going down that, the path of a silent show, I don't think we can figure that out in time, if, if it exists.
Okay. It is a hard place to be. I'm, I can go both ways. Difficult decision to make. So I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a, a motion to adopt.
Mr. Sotile?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe someone else wants to speak, and the public hearing has been reopened.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the public hearing was reopened, I'm sorry. Please come, come up. You can come up. Give us your name and spelling your last name.
My name is Sue Moore, last name M O O R E. I'm totally in agreement with my husband, Mike Scott, about the issues with the animals, we've already discussed all of that. I just have a comment. I'm not a member of Shadow Mountain. I was invited as a guest a couple of years ago when they had their indoor Fourth of July program with the indoor fireworks. It was lovely, it was a beautiful worship service, they had lots of music that was, really got you up and feeling very patriotic. And then they had these indoor fireworks that was amazing. I mean, it was exciting, and it did the job of what they're trying to do, in my opinion, is to get everyone feeling the patriot, patriotism, and what we're there for, to worship God and our country. So I don't see the need for outdoor fireworks if we can manage to get that same kind of feeling indoors. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
You guys worked me up, I've been sitting back here listening to all this, and I'm thinking, this doesn't seem right. But yes, we do have animals, and it is to have to go through what we go through three days in a row, every night, medicating the dogs, making them calm, worrying about, are they going to break through the fence? It, it is an issue, for sure. We have to do it on the Fourth of July, we don't have a choice. And all, like you said, all of the illegal fireworks that go on the whole week, the animals are all uptight anyway. So why, why should we have to add to that? Thank you for listening to me.
Just a moment, Ms. Moore, see if there's any questions that my fellow commissioners have. Do you have any questions, Ms. Moore? No? Okay, thank you. We have somebody else? Oh, no. Okay, do you want to, you already spoke, pardon me?
Is it okay if I just add?
Sure. Come up, sure. Give us your name.
A little bit shorter. Tina Shaw, S H A W. And I would like you to think about the precedent that's going to be set tonight. Having come to planning commission meetings since the eighties, since Granite Hills started to do fireworks, and I'm a Granite Hill alum, Valhalla Christian High, I know that once approved, it becomes a precedent. So you're not only deciding for this year, you will be deciding for future years, how our community will be treated, our neighborhood. Any questions?
No.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again.
Sure. Any other speakers? Okay, I, I move to close public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Sotile, second by Commissioner Vias, please vote.
Motion carries unanimous, members present.
Is anyone ready to push it?
Is it okay to just make one more comment?
Yeah, sure.
Because, you know, certainly I understand the thing about precedent, I think our precedent, I'll make sure I spay that word properly, precedent, really shifted two years ago when COVID came. COVID came. And a lot of things that were indoors moved outdoors. And I think that that's, that's going to be pushed on a lot of businesses, worship centers, organizations, if they want to be able to continue because there's always a fear that if they're having something indoors, now you can't have it, or everybody has to be masked, or you have to show vaccination cards. And I mean, that just adds a whole nother complexity to anything that, you know, I mean, churches had to go to court to have the right to have service. So while I appreciate that, I think that some of, I mean, I think part of this happened because of COVID and because it was discovered that, wow, everybody really did have a nice time outside and the kids were more free to roam around and not have to be in a seat, you know, during that time and enjoy themselves. So I think that part of our existence has changed, at least in, you know, in the near future. But I do appreciate what you're saying, that a lot of times it's like, well, we're going to just do this one event and then next year. Well, we did it last year.
Right.
But Fourth of July won't always be on a Monday. I mean, so there's, I mean, there's a lot of complexities with this year and the dates. If they were doing this and it happened to be June 30th and July 1st, and there was a few days, it may have been less impactful. Not that it wouldn't have been impactful, but at least it wouldn't have been three days in a row.
Okay.
And I think too, with the COVID numbers being up, that's also a concern with so many things. So I understand what you're saying, but it's kind of a catch-22 in this situation. So it's a hard one to call because I do appreciate the animals, yet I, as someone who celebrates Fourth of July, it's hard to say, no, you can't celebrate, you know. It's a hard one.
Guess it's up to me. All right. I, just for your information, I know court decisions have been made by presidents, you know, this, someone said a president before and so forth and so on. And I personally don't believe in presidents because I feel that each case is unique in its own fashion, its own way. And you can't depend on somebody else's decision and their particular, unique situation. So for me personally, somebody says, well, you did it last year. Well, the situation could have been differently. And this is a CUP, a conditional use permit, which is a temporary use permit. It's not, some people see it as a president, but I don't see it that way. I don't believe in that kind of a president law. I don't agree with it. So just, it's a matter of opinion that I have. Okay. I would like to move to adopt the next resolution with the exclusion of the raptors, not having the raptors, and to see if Shadow Mountain will limit the noise as much as possible.
If I could just clarify, Mr. Chairman, I think the terminology is reporters.
Oh, reporters. Report, I'm sorry, raptors, reporters. Okay. I was thinking of getting raptured here.
That would be, that would be a whole different problem.
Approving the CEQA exempt, CUP number 2022-0004, subject to the conditions that, regarding the raptor. Not the rapture, the raptor.
Reporters.
Reporters. Reporters. Do I have a second?
I will second. I will second.
Okay. Motion made, Commissioner Sotile, second by Commissioner Pollock-Rude. Please vote.
Motion carried by unanimous vote of members present.
Okay. All right. And possibly on my suggestion, some of you that might be burdened, might want to talk to Brian Snow regarding that. I think he's willing to accommodate some of you. I believe he is. But something that you can talk to him about it, that I think he will listen to you. Okay? Next item, oh, Commissioner Circle. We forgot about you. I, Commissioner Rose is not here. He's in Hawaii. So he couldn't make the meeting. So I spoke with him last night and he was okay with the election of the planning commissioners this evening. Is everybody okay with doing that? Or would you rather wait until he's here?
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, sorry, we, there was one additional. We had agenda item number three, which was a report-
You're right.
On the Vista Palms.
You're right. Vista Palms residences. Okay, this is number three, Vista Palm residences, review of a single-room occupancy residency project and accept the report. So the report is?
All right. Good evening, commissioners. This is the Vista Palms 12-month review, slightly delayed, submitted, originally submitted by the Vista International Group. Scott Tolk is the general manager. So just a quick overview, this is a 12-month review of CUP number 2258, which allowed the conversion of a motel, the former Roadway Inn, to a single occupancy SRO residence. The review was required in the conditions of approval to ensure compatibility with surrounding community and to ensure that the conditions had been met and are continuing to be met. The project was submitted in January of 2020 and planning commission approved the CUP with conditions. The project included the conversion of 112 motel units for extended stay. They rehabilitated the structure, including some improvements to the exterior paint, interior improvements to make each unit separately habitable, so efficiency kitchens essentially, and then to overhaul and rehab the amenities, so the laundry rooms and the community room. In January of 2020, or 2021, final inspections were approved from fire, Heartland Fire, building and planning departments. So just again, to cover kind of some of the ongoing conditions, there was a maximum 112 rental units established. They needed to maintain the existing parking count, which was 117. They were required to submit a physical elements report, which was approved by the building official, and then subsequently work on those improvements. They were required to submit and obtain approval of an operational management plan, which they did. The conditional use permit required that they maintain their 22,900 square feet of landscaping, that their police calls for service not exceed 113 calls per calendar year. So that's one per unit plus the manager's unit, and that they participate in the crime-free multi-housing program. Just to reiterate here, this is the subject site on Elcone Boulevard, just north or west of the Interstate 8. This was the site plan that was included with the project. This cuts off a little triangular portion to the north, which, as you'll see in a moment, has some dilapidated landscaping that they are needing to maintain. We've reached out to them and they're working on that. Here's some site photographs that were taken by staff just recently. So you'll see the landscaping on a majority of the site is, you know, irrigated and kept nice. You'll see here, the paint finish was redone. One other issue that had come up during the first year of their operation was that cars were parking illegally on Elcone Boulevard there in the bicycle lane. The management has also been notified of that and they, it sounds like in the past had posted notices when this became an issue and will continue to do so in hopes that residents and their guests don't park illegally there. And then this is looking towards that patch to the north that unfortunately, it looks like the grass is not being irrigated recently. Again, we, staff had reached out to the management company and they're aware and will be working on that. And then these are a few shots of the interior. This is that small community room. It looks like someone set up the elliptical in front of the TV. This was a rendering that they had provided us of the, one of the units on the interior and then facing the efficiency kitchen. And then I also wanted to cover briefly the calls for service data. So as you might remember, or some of you might remember, in 2018, 2019, there were over 400 calls for service under the previous ownership. During kind of the transition phase, when they were doing construction and kind of commencing operations as an SRO, that number was 105. And then through May of this year, that number has dropped to 15 calls to service, which trends better than the previous year. They also are actively participating in the crime-free multi-housing program, with their last certificate completed in November of last year. I did want to also mention, sorry, that the applicant was advised of the hearing tonight for this 12-month review, but their offices are in Canada, so they couldn't be in attendance. They were asked if there were any other concerns outside of those I mentioned to you, the parking and the landscaping, and staff did not have any additional concerns. But we told them we would relay any comments or questions or concerns that the commission has tonight. And with that, there's no staff recommendation other than to discuss and accept the report. So we're available for any questions you might have.
Any questions?
No, just that I drive by that place almost, well, every time I have to drive into work if I'm not doing telemedicine. And it definitely has improved in the way it looks. And someone that I know that used to do ride sharing, used to dread having to do any pickups there back in the day, and also has commented on how much it's improved. So it was definitely a good decision to convert that from the kind of crime-ridden place that it was and make it something that, as people are driving in, and also being so close to the high school, that was always a concern. And I think a lot of groups used to stay there because you'd see buses, you know, like maybe, I don't know if it was teams or something coming in for competitions. And I think, oh my goodness, if my child, if I found out my child had been staying there when it was a motel or whatever, I would have been mortified. So, and I saw that they had a breakdown at the end on things, you know, good, fair, poor. So it looks like all the items that needed to be addressed in that breakdown from the Palomar Group Consulting, did I say that right, are going to be addressed. And they had a breakdown of what they estimated the cost to be.
Yeah, so I think you're referencing the physical elements report, or I believe they titled it something slightly different than that. But yeah, all those improvements that were noted in that report would have been made and inspected already.
I think this is the third one that we've done in Alcohun. I haven't done three.
Correct.
Yeah. And they worked out very well, all three of them.
Yeah. I have a question, which is, it doesn't probably have a good answer. We saw renderings of what they proposed the insides of the rooms would look like. But did they take any pictures after they had renovated but before residents moved in? Are there any empty units? Do we know anything like that?
You know, when I, so what they did when they were doing the construction is they started up the top floor and worked their way down. And so they were starting to occupy as they made their way through. So there wasn't, at least when I did my inspection, there was not an opportunity to see a vacant unit. They were already booked up. But building staff might have been able to. I don't have any pictures available.
Maybe I could just add that as part of, just if you go to like theinternetapartments.com, they do publish photographs of the units that are available for rent. And so those units are consistent with the images that we depicted in our presentation tonight. And so it's our expectation that they have all reached that level of quality.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I will say that when I drive by, even from the freeway, it looks nicer, not just from the paint point of view. Paint, people can slap paint on anything. But one thing that I have noticed in its absence is the encampments that used to be right behind the hotel by the parking lot or the trash enclosure. And I don't see that anymore.
Right. That's good.
In reading through this, it was a rehab rehabilitation facility. Now, go ahead. No, so do they have any, is this just a segue to move on? Or do they, do they have longstanding tenants?
Oh, so it's, it's not, it's not programmed for rehabilitation, it's just rental units, yeah. They're, I believe naturally affordable. They're not deed restricted or anything. But single-room occupancy, so efficiency kitchen and kind of like a studio setup.
So I know they don't do weekly or anything, so month-to-month, but do they have year leases? Or is it a strictly month-to-month type situation?
Conditions require that they have, I believe, a 30-day minimum stay.
Okay.
I believe.
Okay. No, I live around the corner from this, so it definitely has improved over the years.
Yeah. It's a good project. Okay. Okay. Do we make the motion to accept the report? Or just, okay. I move to accept the report?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made, Commissioner Sotile, second by Commissioner Circle. Please vote.
Unanimously passed with members present.
Okay. All right. You haven't forgotten what I said previously. Okay. Well, I make a motion to elect Commissioner Rose as a chair and Commissioner Pollock-Rude as vice chair.
Do you have any objections to that? Okay. I want to make sure you're prepared for this. Vice chair is normally an easy job unless the chair has to recuse himself or is absent. It's good training.
Do you have a second?
I, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Sotile, second by Commissioner Valles. Please vote. Okay.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Okay. Very good. Staff communications?
No additional communications from staff. Thank you.
Commissioner reports or comments?
I don't think so.
Okay. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. A motion made by Commissioner Circle, second by Commissioner Pollock-Rude. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Okay. You know, we always get in a unanimous vote at the end. It's so wonderful.
No one finds that as a difficult decision.